Welcome back to night two of our annual town meeting. If everyone can find their seats. And a kindly reminder, thank you so much to everyone yesterday for complying with my request. If those that can who are town meeting members move to the front, I would appreciate it. Having been advised by the town clerk, Susan Galvin, that a majority of the town meeting members are present, I hereby declare that a quorum is present for the transaction of business and I further hereby declare that town meeting is reconvened. The meeting will now come to order. Before we begin, Ms. Lyndalee Sheridan has asked to speak briefly, as is customary to the body regarding the upcoming Milton Music Festival. Permission has been granted, Ms. Sheridan.
I'm Lyndalee Sheridan, town meeting member, precinct nine. Thank you, Madam Moderator, and thank you to the Milton community for again voting Milton Music Fest and fireworks, the best community event in the town of Milton for the Milton times. Please save the dates of June, Saturday, June 28th, beginning at 5:00 PM, when festivities will launch on Hutchinson Field, beautiful Hutchinson Field, for Milton Music Fest. Bring your family and your friends, your neighbors, and enjoy an evening of unbelievable activities. There'll be face painting and kids' characters, a giant and a small water slide. Don't forget the kids' bathing suits and towels. Everyone says I forgot the towels. And our ever-popular sandbox that this year will be in memory of Jared Crowley, a beloved member of our team who has created this sandbox every year and passed away unexpectedly this fall. Music offerings will include Michelle Brooks Thompson, award-winning recording artist, who was a finalist on The Voice, and we're bringing back a favorite from a few years ago, the Big Party Orchestra. Fireworks will go off promptly at 9:45 and food and beverages will be able to be purchased throughout the event. On Sunday, June 29th, we'll celebrate Celtic Sunday from 1:00 to 8:00 PM, where you can hear an afternoon of your favorite Irish tunes by local favorites, enjoy a trad tent or a headliner, Sean Keane, direct from Ireland. These events are totally free and funded by our generous donor, the Milton Copeland Family Foundation, and generous sponsors. So mark your calendars now and don't miss the fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. Just a few points of order this evening before we begin. First, a reminder that individuals are required pursuant to town meeting time to address all comments and questions to myself, the moderator. Second, if individuals asking questions can kindly stay nearby in the front rows until after the answering speaker has finished, to ensure that the speaker has actually addressed their questions, that way we can avoid waiting for members to return to the microphone. Third, as a reminder, members may only speak when recognized by the moderator, so please do not ask follow-up questions of the speaker without recognition. Brief follow-up questions may be permitted, however, in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak, back-and-forth conversations are impermissible. Fourth, excuse me, were able, you are requested to list all the questions that you may have sequentially, in order to afford the moderator the opportunity to locate appropriate boards and committees to answer, if possible, your questions. Fifth, questions may or may not be able to be answered, excuse me, during town meeting. Pursuant to town meeting time, if questions are unable to be answered on the floor, there is no further avenue afforded at town meeting. However, members are kindly invited to contact the relevant boards, committees, or departments after town meeting. Sixth, you are kindly reminded that, as is set forth in the beginning of the warrant, smoking is prohibited on school grounds, and so you're asked to refrain from smoking outside of the high school during breaks, or should at any point you leave during the meeting. Seventh, a member raised a question about the vote, a procedural question about the vote on last night's consent agenda. I've brought the question before Town Council, the Town Administrator. We have reviewed the rules set forth in town meeting time, as well as the rules and bylaws of Milton. I have reviewed the video from last night's town meeting, as well as the prior year's meeting, in which the vote on the consent agenda was word-for-word identical. Therefore, Town Council and I are in agreement that there is no issue, but I thank the member for raising the question, and I invite all the members to continue to reach out to me with any questions they may have regarding the proceedings. Finally, if following the end of tonight's meeting, you can kindly remember to return your electronic voting clicker, our clerk's office would greatly appreciate it. Before we do anything else, I just want to do another test vote for our electronic voting system. Mr. Mallett, do you think annual town meeting will end tonight? Yes is, I don't make the questions up, by the way. Yes is A, no is B, and C is abstain, or you can refrain from clicking. It's up to you, but 86% of people, or 186 people, vote yes, 17 vote no, and 14 people abstained. We're going to go through the list. If you don't see your name or your clicker didn't light up, please go up to Mr. Mallett Okay? If anybody has any questions with their clicker, please go to the front of the room. In the meantime, we will now move on to the articles before the body. The first article is light trespass, which is Article 37.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Agostino, go ahead, you're recognized.
Thank you, Moderator Dillon. Diana Tulio Agostino, precinct nine, has discussed, I'm standing to move to reopen Article 35 to address a technical issue that I have provided to those involved, so that once, as long as the motion is seconded, then I can summarize, synopsis, the concerns, and then we can have the presentation from whoever you spoke to get answers. So the motion is to reopen Article 35 on page 65.
Thank you, Ms. Agostino. Do I hear a second? And the motion on the floor for Ms. Agostino is to reconsider or to reopen vote on Article 35, which, as you remember, is the CPC. So I hear a second, okay? So we'll take a vote. And I note that this has occurred within the hour, because the vote was held in the final, it was exactly three minutes before the end of town meeting, and we are certainly well within the first 57 minutes, so.
Moderator Dillon, question?
Yes.
Diana Tulio Agostino, precinct nine, again. Do we take the vote before I explain why I've made the motion? I can't recall.
Yes, if you wouldn't mind briefly explaining your thought process, thank you.
Thank you very much. Town meeting members, back in 1963, which I don't believe any of us might have been here, approved, and the town clerk at the time certified, fatherland court, 41.4 acres known as Pope's Pond would come under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission. Two years ago, Pope's Pond, 41.4 acres, were to be split with the Conservation Commission retaining the majority of it, and a playground, which I didn't make note of some less than five acres being used for the playground. However, today, I, once again, what I did two years ago, I obtained the land court documents, which, two years ago, and provided, there is a legal process for doing all this, provided the article to town meeting, but it was stated that the land court was soon going to make the change and split the land. So even has it today, two years later, the land court still has not either received or approved splitting the 41.4 acres. That's why I stand to make this motion, so that we can reconsider the article and going forward, there would not be any, you know, serious issues with doing what we want to do.
Thank you, Ms. Agostino. We will pull up a vote in just one second. Yes, sir?
Peter Mullin, precinct two. Wonder if we can hear from the CPA committee as to whether or not they want this reconsidered on these grounds or not?
Thank you. Mr. Callahan, you're recognized. I would just caution, that's a very good point, I will caution that I would like to not get into the merits, but if you can briefly address Mr. Mullin's question of whether or not the CPC, excuse me, would like to have this reconsidered, thank you.
Thank you, Moderator Dillon. Tom Callahan, precinct four, town meeting member, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I'm not a lawyer out beyond my skis here, but we believe that this is beyond the scope of what we voted on last night. It was just plainly a funding article for worthy projects in town, so that's, we would recommend a no vote to reopen this.
Thank you. Okay, we can open the vote as soon as we are ready. This is a simple majority, whether or not to open Article 35 back up for reconsideration. I will open it up for a vote. A is yes, B is no, and C, or not clicking anything, will be an abstention. Then if you can kindly, anybody whose clicker isn't working, if you can kindly go see Mr. Thank you. 13% of people said yes, 83% no, 180 no, 29 yes, so the motion fails, thank you. We are now going to move to Article 37, which is light trespass by law. So with respect to Article 37, you have been provided with a green sheet, which was available to you yesterday and is also in the front of the room this evening, set forth in the warrant. This was also published on the town website and will be on the screen before you. So I want to remind everybody, particularly the new members, what a green sheet is. So in this instance, the submitting body for Article 37 is the Select Board. The Select Board requested, this was after the publication of the warrant, which is not uncommon. The warrant committee's comment was after the printing of the warrant, and again, which is not uncommon. So you have the warrant committee's recommendation set forth in the green sheet before you. And the motion on the floor, as recommended by the warrant committee, is a motion to refer the article back to the Select Board for further study. I will now hear from the Select Board if the Select Board would like to discuss the warrant committee's recommendation that the matter be referred back to the Select Board for further study. Mr. Wells, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So the Select Board voted unanimously not to refer it back to the warrant committee. Oh yeah, not to agree with the warrant committee and not to refer it back to ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. Caldwell, would the warrant committee like to say anything else regarding the green sheet or this article?
Good evening, Tom Caldwell, town meeting member, precinct six, and Chair of your warrant committee. Good evening, town meeting. I'd like to, I'm not going to be long, I'd like to just open up, just by reading the first couple of sentences of our comment for you, if you haven't already read it. "The warrant committee generally supports the establishment of thoughtful regulations regarding light trespass. We believe that such rules are important to protect the quality of life of our neighbors and to preserve the inherent beauty of our town." So, right off the top, I want this body to know that your warrant committee supports regulation of this type, specifically light trespass. We have had, we have, your warrant committee has looked at this matter since our February meeting, and I just want to point that out, because it is pointed out in our comment. However, the comment really does not address what's before you this evening. On the warrant committee, we have seen approximately six different versions of this since February, and we've seen three versions of it within the last week. We were presented this matter on April 30th, and the bylaw that's before you now is somewhat different than what was presented to us. So, as I indicated, we've seen many different drafts, the drafts in your warrant, the ones that your committee reviewed, and frankly, the warrant committee believes that this is a great idea. However, it's not ready for the grill yet, needs to marinate a little more. And what I want to just point out, especially for the older, no, older, excuse me, the more experienced or veteran town meeting members, is that, like our, and we're going to be talking about this in a few moments, our ADU and site plan review, and hearken back to February, and thinking back beyond February to our planning board and all the work they did. So I think, as your Chair of the warrant committee, the warrant committee, and as a longtime town meeting member, bylaws are difficult to draft. As I stated in February, we are certainly not experts, and we defer to those who are. This is a great idea, however, the warrant committee just believes that we can't really give you a good opinion on it, because we haven't had appropriate time to study what's before you right now. There are some definition changes, there's some new language added. I'm sure upon study and research and review and discussion, we'll be able to opine on that for you, but it's really the desire of this committee to give you the best product, so you don't have to work hard on the floor. The warrant committee believes this is just moving a little too fast, that we could see it back maybe in June, or maybe in the fall. And I don't think we should, the warrant committee doesn't believe we should waste too much time in getting it back, because it does, and it can truly improve the quality of life in the town. Couple of concerns we had, and you know, the article talks about fines, criminal matters, you know, there's no appeal process, you know, it's a rather open-ended law. We had questions concerning enforcement, there were some definitions that were addressed in the matter before, in the article before you right now, but like I said just moments ago, we just don't believe it's ready for your consideration. And we expect, if you do send it back to the Select Board, that we will get a good product from the authors and the Select Board, either in our June meeting or maybe in the fall. So again, we are requesting that you send the matter back for further study. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Now, on the town's website was posted a potential motion to amend, which is not before you at this time. However, because during the last town meeting, the former moderator allowed the former Select Board member, now member of the town meeting, Erin Bradley, to explain the amendment for the purpose of his instructing the body whether or not it would be welcome to have it be referred back, I will give Ms. Bradley the opportunity to speak generally and very briefly about what this amendment might entail. But again, the motion before the body is the motion to refer back at the recommendation of the warrant committee. Ms. Bradley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Erin Bradley, town meeting member, precinct four. We, myself and Sean O'Rourke, went before the warrant committee just last week. We spent two hours with them, explaining this, explaining what was before them. We had a hearing when I was still on the Select Board, back on April 8th. During that hearing, we received nothing but positive comments. We received, I believe, a couple dozen emails of town meeting neighbors that wanted this to be accomplished. The changes that you see on the green sheet, very broadly, are that, and, she's left, and, are, very broadly, are about the measuring. So to measure light trespass, you actually measure in lux, and we're going to have a short presentation, if we vote to not send this back, explaining to you what exactly that is. So we put those in the amended version, so that that is actually covered and understandable. We also put in a lot of exceptions. I heard a lot about your holiday lights, no worries, it's in the exceptions. You don't have to worry about those at all. So there's a lot of things in there that we added, because we heard people on the floor last time we were here and at our hearing. We also made a change, that it's not the Select Board that will be overseeing it, it's the Select Board or their designee, so that's changed throughout. I want to also say that on April 8th, when we had the public hearing, nobody from the warrant committee was there to approach us. I was told that that's because they had a meeting, and that's not true. We actually, they did not have a meeting, and we didn't hear anything from them. So when I sat before them for two hours the other night, if I could just address Mr. Caldwell's piece about the appeal, none of our bylaws actually have that. So if you get, they'll take the drinking in public spaces, right? Let's say you break that law, you get a fine. There's no appeal process in that. This is how bylaws are written, and so that's the general sense on that. I just wanted to clarify that for folks, since Mr. Caldwell brought it up. So, there you go, those are my changes. If you would like the short presentation, so everybody can learn what a lux is, because now I know what it is, it's .1 foot candle. So, so, if, and see, there's the, there it is. Basically, if you scroll back up, we added the piece about how bright it can be, and what nuisance means. We just defined some more words. That's it, that's the change, that's been up on the website since Monday, and you had the green sheet last night.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. So now we will, because we are addressing the motion to refer back, and not yet the motion to amend, we will address the motion to refer back first, and should the body wish to refer it back, that will be the end of the matter. Should the body wish not to refer it back, then we will go into the presentation, and the body can determine whether or not to amend the article as set forth in Ms. Bradley's motion to amend. Does that make sense to everybody? Great, thank you. So if we can pull up the vote. Thank you, I will go over that. The member asked, which way do you vote for which thing? And I will address that. I will address that in a second. So, the motion on the floor is the recommendation of the warrant committee, which is to refer the article back to the Select Board for further study. Should you wish to refer the matter back to the Select Board for further study, you will vote yes or A. Should you wish not to refer the matter back to the Select Board for further study, then you will vote B, and we will continue. Should you wish to abstain, you vote C, or don't press anything. I will now open that up for a vote. 37, thank you. I will now open it up for a vote. This is a majority on whether or not to refer it back.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I think we're voting on the motion to refer back?
Yes.
So it's not technically Article 37, I don't think?
It is, because that's the recommendation of the warrant committee.
Okay.
But thank you. Okay? So we had 89 people voted to refer it back, 130 voted not to refer it back, and one person abstained. So we will not refer it back, and now, Ms. Bradley, if you would like to, make your amendment.
Thank you so much, Madam Moderator, Erin Bradley, town meeting member, precinct four. I'd like to make an amendment to Article 37 as printed on the green sheet. I believe that there will also be a friendly amendment from Mr. O'Rourke, oh no, never mind, and so that's it, just what's on the green sheet.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second? Okay? And I will open this up for discussion? Actually, thank you. Let's have Mr. O'Rourke do the presentation, and then I will open it up for discussion. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
So Scott Matthews, town meeting member, precinct 10. My only concern and question is that the green sheet doesn't have any of these changes, it just has the warrant committee's. I don't, I didn't see any green sheet with the...
Thank you, that is correct, and that is what Clerk Galvin just came over to tell me. You're right, so let me clear up some confusion. The motion to amend was only on the website, it has not been provided to you on the green sheet. So it will be displayed on the screen, and we will have to follow along. It has not been printed on the green sheet. However, the warrant committee has reviewed it, my understanding is that the Select Board has reviewed it, and so Ms. Bradley's motion will be as displayed on the screen. Thank you for bringing that point to my attention, and now if Mr. O- And now if Mr. O'Rourke would like to give his presentation. Thank you.
Sean O'Rourke, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8, Chair of the School Building Committee. I rise tonight in a technical sense. My day job, I'm the Director of Electrical Engineering. Lighting is a component of what we do daily. So as this article was being discussed at the last town meeting, I was actually away on work, so I wasn't able to present and provide some clarity. There were certain terminologies that were used in it that were incorrect. So I appeared in front of the Warrant Committee as the former Speaker spoke this week or last week for about two hours to kind of clear some things up. So what you see here in the text is Section 5 under enforcement of how it was written in the warrant. What it talks about with the blue line is, it talks about a measured, a unit of measurement of measuring lumens. The problem is you can't measure lumens. So what happens is, the graphic that's there, it kind of displays what lumens are. It's the emitting light out of a light source, whether it's a candle, a light, an LED, whatever that is. The unit of measurement or what you measure for light is called illuminance. It's the amount of light that falls onto a surface. So as we're looking at this, the unit of measurement is actually foot candles or lux. Next slide, please. So what's a foot candle? What's a lux? So a foot candle is a candle held one foot away from a one-foot-by-one-foot square surface. The amount of light that falls on that is considered one foot candle. Lux is essentially the metric version of that. Same light, one meter away, a one-meter square. So when you look at that, the differential between the two is about a 10-to-1 differential. So Ms. Bradley was correct for, you know, her units that she did before. Next slide, please. The other thing that comes up, and I heard this as I listened to the last town meeting, there was a Speaker that talked about, you know, where the light is. So if you have a rated light at 800 lumens and you're a foot away, you have 800 foot candles on that surface. Move the light away a little bit, four feet away, you go from 800 foot candles to 50 foot candles. So the point is, the further you move the light away, the light falls off or the unit of measurement falls off. Next slide, sorry. The other one that comes in too is you're measuring this stuff. Ms. Bradley talked about a measurement device that she got on Amazon. Those are not accurate. So when we're talking about fractions of foot candles or lux, as we are going to be, you want to make sure you have the right device and it's calibrated. The typical devices that you see here is essentially what we use. So, you know, if this gets accepted, you know, I think the town should invest in one of these and not use a cheaper one. Next. So, you know, graphically, when you're looking at this, the idea of this is to have a property boundary that's defined on each property and that you're not putting light onto your neighbor's property. So, you know, what we're looking at this on the far right is essentially, you know, what we're trying to do is aim all the light down so it doesn't go past the property boundaries and, you know, work to not have what's shown on the left. Next slide. This is, you know, part of what gets talked about a little bit more when you talk about glare. So glare is perceived illuminance. When you're looking at that, you know, on the far left is a fully glary fixture. You guys see those a lot around town? And then as you start cutting it off by putting optics on it, you can push more of the light down. Typically, what happens is you start pulling the light source up into the fixture and using the internals of the fixture to push all the light down, which is essentially called a full cutoff fixture. That deals with sky glow and stuff like that, but it also plays in a little bit with light trespass. Next slide. So the other part that comes in too is when we talk about illuminance, which is the light that falls on a surface, the reflected light is actually what you see. So everybody sees light differently because not everybody's eye is the same. So, next slide. The other one that plays in too is the lens or the portions of your eye change over time. They become more yellow as you get older. Where the red line touches, that's a 60-year-old's lens that's come out. So the thing with that is, again, lighting, viewing it is subjective. You need to measure it. Next slide. And then, you know, for some of the values that we did here, there are different ordinances that are around right now. We went through and looked at a lot of these, used those to kind of develop what that unit of measurement or the value of that unit of measurement should be. So when we looked at that, there was a lot of discussion that we had. Next slide. And I think that's it. So again, just rise to provide some technical content, so as you have discussions, hopefully that helps. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. If we can now display, Ms. Bosworth, if we can now display the proposed amendment. And should the Select Board wish to speak to the proposed amendment? Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. And should the Warrant Committee wish to speak to the proposed amendment?
No matter what.
Thank you. We'll just go through slowly so everybody can see and then we'll open it up for discussion. If we can make it larger? Thank you. If everyone's had a chance to review, I see Mr. Fahy wishing to speak. Mr. Fahy, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Sean Fahy, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 9 and re-elected Planning Board Member. Guess my comment is really process more than it is what's on the screen right now. I think every matter that we review here in town meeting is critically important, no matter what the matter is. This is a very important matter. It's been before the body repeatedly. However, before we voted to refer it back, we weren't afforded the understanding that we would have to read off the screen for the revisions that are made. I don't think that gives the members what the members are here and responsible for, for making good decisions based on having well-understood information on behalf of the precincts that they represent. Now, had we, before we voted, Madam Moderator, known that we were going to have to conduct this by reading off the screen, I think it may have altered people's opinion on whether they would support sending it back or not. But I don't agree that this is good practice for any town meeting, for any topic. This is really difficult to do.
Thank you. Ma'am, if you would like to speak, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Alexandra Paneris, Precinct 5. I'm basically echoing the same comments. I think that we, this is complicated. We even have, you know, lines through here. It's an awful lot of pages and it doesn't look anything like what we received. And so I think that, again, I don't think I could vote for this and feel good about it because there are just too many changes up on the screen. So I think I prefer to see another chance to refer it back and then have it come back to us in a way that we can all study.
May I ask if you are making a motion to reconsider?
I would like to make a motion to reconsider, to have it referred back.
May I hear a second? Okay. Because it has been within an hour, obviously, we will go back to, we will reopen and go back to the motion to refer back, which was the motion on the floor previously. If we can pull that back up?
Do you want to see a photo of that?
Yes. If anybody would like to discuss the motion to refer back? Sorry. If anybody would like to discuss the motion to reconsider? Yes? Ma'am, you are recognized.
Hi, Deborah Milbauer, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. I would like, in order to decide whether to send it back, if somebody could explain why this article was brought forward to help me make a decision about sending it back or not. I realize the question is about not knowing the language, but it will help me decide whether I want to send it back. So why do we even need this? I know light trespass is difficult for nocturnal animals. I know for a lot of residents, there's a lot of spots around town. And I know for people who are new to this conversation, it feels kind of weird and light-wise, it a big deal, why do we need it? And I'm wondering, in order for me to decide if we could just hear about why we even need this, and maybe somebody could actually explain what are the changes in it, and then we could decide whether to send it back or not. Thank you so much.
So, there seems to be some confusion, so let me clarify before we move to our next Speaker. Right now, we are talking only about the motion to reconsider whether or not to refer it back. If anybody would like to speak to the motion to reconsider? Yes, sir, you are recognized.
Lee Michael McLean, Precinct 10. I was just hoping, Madam Moderator, that you could clarify what will happen if we refer it back, if we reconsider and then we vote to refer it back, it goes back to the Select Board. Can they then resubmit it as soon as the next town meeting or do they have to wait some period of time? Because I just want people to understand that if they don't reconsider it and they just vote this article down because they're not happy with the way that it looks, I think it can't come back for like a year or something like that.
That can be explained by Town Council, Peter Mello.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Peter Mello, Murphy Hesse, Tummin Lehane, Town Council. That would be correct if this were a zoning amendment. This is a proposed general bylaw, so there's no prohibition on, you know, bringing it back before town meeting at any time, next month, in the fall, or any time thereafter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would anybody else like to be heard on the motion to reconsider? Sir, you are recognized.
Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. There was a Speaker just before me not referring, asking that we get some explanation about what referring back might mean. But before them, before that person, there were two Speakers. I rise in support of the points that they made. As you might recall, at our last town meeting, we had some Planning Board articles where I made the point that we, as town meeting members, are, let me speak for myself, I as town meeting member have a responsibility to understand what I'm voting on. I think the point that was made here, which is that we're seeing an amendment that we have to read off the screen, we don't even have a green sheet. I rise in support of the motion to reconsider and I urge that we vote to refer it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Ms. Agostino, should you wish to speak about the motion to reconsider only?
Thank you, Moderator Dylan. Diane Tulio Agostino, Precinct 9. And I rise, because it has been over 40 years watching the process, I think someone pointed out the process, and aside, simple things like individuals who have difficulty reading, blue changes, crossouts. I believe there's only two pages to this article in the warrant, but what looks up there, and there might be rumors that it would have been four to five pages, has its now presented to us. So I'm very concerned for the rights of those who can't read it, can't assimilate it. And I'd also request, previously, the term out of scope came up, which not having a copy in front of me to tell, I can't assimilate whether or not this is fully out of scope. And I'm all for the article. I think that's similar to what the Chair of the Warrant Committee said. So I'd like a detailed explanation again of the Warrant Committee's time process reviewing this, because I believe they said they only got several changes this week. Today's only Tuesday, so that would have meant yesterday. And if we can also, especially for the new members, have Town Council explain the legality of an article being out of scope, which I think, could we scroll back to the original first sentence?
Sure, Ms. Bosworth, if you can scroll back.
Which is why I think the reconsideration is important. Even definitions are definitely changed, which is really wise that they have someone who understands all that working on it. But that's why I rise to recommend reconsideration of the refer back to the next town meeting, which may happen in June. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Agostino. I heard two questions, one of which was if the Warrant Committee can address the process and then also a question for Attorney Mello. So, Mr. Caldwell, if you can answer that question first?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Tom Caldwell, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6 and Chair of your Warrant Committee. Again, I just want to reiterate that this isn't, you know, I'm not here standing before you inferring in any way that the work done on this by our fellow town meeting member is out of line or not a good idea or, obviously, we're working towards a final good product. But I will reiterate what I had mentioned just a few moments ago. We saw this all, the February warrant, special. Then there were amendments on the floor during the February special town meeting that were sent back. Those versions were much different from the ones that appeared in your annual warrant that's printed here and your, the copy you received in the mail. And then it was an additional change respectfully when Ms. Bradley and Mr. O'Rourke presented to the Warrant Committee on April 30th. As of this week, yesterday afternoon, we received a fifth version and also today, a sixth version with also additional changes that you may have heard mentioned here by Mr. O'Rourke. So it's frankly, what by our counter, it would be six separate versions of this bylaw. And as I indicated in my opening comments, I think we're working towards a good final product. But I would reiterate, I think the best, or the Warrant Committee would ask and believes for the town, given the fact that this really does touch every corner of the town, every property, commercial and residential, we had asked that you just send this back for further study. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Attorney Mello, if you could answer the second question regarding the scope?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Peter Mello, Town Council's Office. Well, of course, scope is something with respect to which the moderator enjoys a lot of discretion. It's a question of reasonableness. I think, and I... I think, and I think I made this comment at a meeting previously, really, you need to go through each of the provisions and make a judgment call, I think, on a case-by-case basis. So I guess to opine about scope, it would be necessary to identify the provision that's purported to be outside of scope. Sometimes, it's kind of a rule of thumb, this comes up in zoning a lot, where amendment seeks to impose a new requirement that a voter might not have, you know, recognized, might be at issue, or might be proposed as part of the article. That would be one factor that might support deeming it out of scope. But there's pretty broad latitude with respect to scope questions, and the moderator enjoys a lot of discretion. And just to go back to a fine point, the question about whether to refer an article as opposed to, you know, other action, is a lot of times more important in the zoning context because of the two-year prohibition on reconsideration of a zoning article that's been the subject of a negative vote. Oftentimes, the only action that you can take on a zoning to protect it from from being barred from reconsideration is a motion to refer. So in the context of zoning, I think this is a more important question. And I just wanted to flag that, because from my perspective, a negative vote and a motion to refer is, you know, procedurally, I guess, academic. Nothing, whether town meeting were to refer it back for further study or reject it, I don't think there would be any bar on bringing this back before town meeting. So I just wanted to clarify that point for what it's worth. But with respect to scope, I think we would need to have, we would need to identify the provision that is being questioned in order to make a determination about whether it's within or outside of scope.
Thank you, Attorney Mello. Additional questions on the motion for reconsideration only? Yes, sir, you are recognized.
Michael Chinman, Precinct 2. I'd like to ask the Town Meeting Member who proposed these amendments, who apparently thought there was a green sheet, now knowing that there is no green sheet before the body. I don't know why. And I'd also like to know how green sheets are promulgated and perhaps why there isn't one here. But now that the Town Meeting Member proposing these amendments knows that there is no green sheet, would she agree to the idea of it being referred back?
Thank you, Mr. Chinman. The question was to the Town Meeting Member, and I'm going to allow that because the Town Meeting Member proposed the amendment. Ma'am, you are recognized. Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Erin Bradley, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. I followed the rules for it to be printed in the green sheet. I got it to the moderator by Friday. I have no idea why it wasn't printed. I didn't know it wasn't printed, and so I apologize. Maybe we should come up with a process on how that happens and what the deadline is to get the green sheets out. I'm not sure what that is, because I thought I was following the rules. So at this point, since you all haven't looked at it, please send it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the motion to reconsider? Mr. Wells has something to say. Chair Wells?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Richard Wells, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. So a little bit of, we took the vote tonight to support this because we did think that you all had the same green sheet that we had when we met at our meeting tonight. So the Select Board has voted to accept it. We'll take it back for further study, hopefully for the June town meeting. I just want to make a point of clarification. You know, how do things like this happen? You know, how does a bylaw like this even come to fruition? How did this wind up in our lap? And I want to thank our former colleague, Member Bradley, who really kind of took the lead on this. This came from a series of complaints that came to the board. And when it arrived in our lap, as many complaints do, we realized that there really wasn't much we could do to address it, because there wasn't a bylaw, there was nothing codified to address it. A little bit of historical thing, you know, this bylaw really will be to serve as a deterrent. Is this an offense that's going to happen every single day? No. But when they do happen, it does give the town in those bodies responsible for enforcement of specific bylaws the ability to enforce it. The veteran members of this body might remember, a few years ago, this body passed a law to reduce the speed limit in the town of Milton to 25 miles an hour. Now, do any of you believe that every car that travels through this town is getting stopped at 26 miles an hour? I would suggest no. But we passed that law because the 25 mile an hour speed limit is the fundamental speed law for the majority of this town, serves as a deterrent. We believe that this bylaw will do the same thing. So again, I thank Member Bradley. I know how hard she's worked on this. I thank my colleagues and Madam Moderator. We will gladly accept this back and hopefully be back with it in June. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Does anybody else wish to speak to the motion to reconsider only? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Ellen Stoddard, Precinct 3, Town Meeting Member. I've been following this journey of this bylaw for a while. And I have a question about if it gets referred back for further study. Who would be at the table to study it since member, what's her name now? Member, not former Select Board Member, currently Town Meeting Member Bradley, is no longer at that table? And whether we need some additional level of expertise or collaboration across boards in order to make sure that when, if and when it comes back in June, it is fully baked and ready for a vote?
Thank you. Chair Wells, if you can answer that question?
In answer to your question, while Ms. Bradley may no longer be a member of the Select Board, she is a resident of the town who has put an inordinate amount of work into this. And I do not believe that any of us would not continue to solicit and appreciate her input. She has done the yeoman's work on this since its inception. I can tell by the conversations I've had with her today and the way she's looking at me, sitting way up in the back right now, that she's very passionate about this and we understand and accept that. I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Just one follow-up. I fully understand and respect all of the work that Erin has done. I'm a huge fan of her work and deeply appreciate that. I guess I was just wondering, in terms of having a champion on the Select Board, I wasn't sure how that worked.
I don't really think it needs much. I mean, as Mr. Caldwell said, I think it might need a couple of tweaks and I don't think it'll take a lot of time. We've done a lot of work. Ms. Bradley's correct, the public hearing, all of that. We've been talking about this for quite some time. So I think had you had the sheets tonight, at least for me and our board, we were confident that we were ready to move on it tonight. So I feel that same confidence that it'll be here next month, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
That's six more weeks of marinating, Mr. Chair.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the motion for reconsideration that is currently on the floor? Okay, I see no one, so I will call for a vote as soon as we're able to pull that slide up. Yes? I will repeat, she did not want to make an assumption if the Warrant Committee had amended their opinion on this new question. And Mr. Caldwell answered no. Thank you. Okay, I will now open the motion for reconsideration, which, because it was made within the hour, only requires a simple majority. A is yes, B is no, C is abstain. No, this is a motion for reconsideration. If it is, people wish to reconsider, then we will vote on the motion to refer it back. Correct. Okay, let's pause the vote. It seems like people have questions about that. If anybody has a question about that, please come forward. Mr. Matthews, you are recognized.
All right, I don't have to, so I'm, I am a little confused exactly what we are voting on. I know we started with, there was voting on the article and it was considering the motion. Were we voting on reconsidering the motion? And a yes means that we don't want the motion, or no, we don't?
Yep. Let me clarify for everyone, and if there are remaining questions, let me know. Right now, we are voting on the motion to reconsider, which is to reopen whether or not to refer it back. Earlier, the body decided not to refer it back. We are now reopening that question of whether or not, we are reconsidering that. So the decision was made. We, if you vote yes, we will reopen the question of whether or not to refer it back for a vote. It's a procedural matter set forth in our rules. If you vote yes, we will then move back to the question of whether or not to refer it back. If no, then we go back to the motion to amend. I know. Okay, I will start again with the vote. Motion to reconsider, A is yes, B is no, C is abstain. So, 202 people said yes, they would like to reconsider, 20 said no, 1 abstain. Therefore, we will go back and reconsider. The motion on the floor, as a reminder, was whether or not to refer it back. We will now vote on whether or not to refer it back. Should anybody wish to be heard on this, you can come forward. Okay, I see no one. Therefore, we can open back up the question of whether or not to refer it back to the Select Board, requiring a majority. If you would like to refer it back, yes, A, no, B. Otherwise, you can abstain by pressing nothing, or C. The motion shall be referred back, yes, 207, no, 12, 1 abstention. Okay, moving right on to Article 38. Recommended that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant. Chair Hall of the Planning Board has requested to speak regarding this article. Chair Hall, you are recognized. Thank you.
Good evening, Meredith Hall, Chair of the Planning Board and Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. We have a short presentation to go through. For those of you who are, have been on town meeting, this was referred back and we have come back listening to the, and addressing the amendments and concerns. So we would like to do a brief presentation for you, and for the new members as well. So here we have our ADU article. Next slide. What is an ADU? Next slide. A self-contained, single unit providing complete independent living facilities on the same lot as a principal dwelling with permanent provisions for living, sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities. It may be a part of an accessory structure, such as a detached garage or a unit that is part of an expanded or remodeled dwelling. It maintains a separate entrance from principal dwelling, which meets building code requirements, has a floor area no larger than half the floor area of the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. Any lot with or zone for a principal, a principal, single-family dwelling unit may have one ADU by right. Any single-family dwelling proposed for the addition of an ADU shall meet the zoning requirements for a single-family dwelling in the zoning district in which it is located or shall be in existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling with non-conformities, which shall not be exacerbated by the addition of an ADU. Why now? On August 6, 2024, Governor Healey signed the Affordable Homes Act into law, Chapter 150 of the Acts of 2024. Section 8 of the Affordable Homes Act amended, amends the zoning act to allow ADUs up to 900 square feet to be built by right in single-family zoning districts. The ADU Act must meet local municipal restrictions, including, but not limited to, additional size restrictions and/or restrictions or prohibitions on short-term rental if the city or town decides to impose these. Local restrictions and your vote. The Planning Board has spent many hours over the course of 12 meetings to discuss ADU zoning restrictions for Milton. Some considerations include setbacks in floor area ratios, parking accommodations, design standards, access to public transportation, rental period limitations, and utility hookups. Process and procedures. The Planning Board may impose reasonable conditions to satisfy compliance with the design standards. The Planning Board shall consider the site plan approval submission at a meeting held no less than 30 days after receipt of the complete submission. The Planning Board shall issue its written decision to the applicant and the building commissioner no more than 75 days after receipt of a site plan approval submission. The decision of the Board shall be by a majority of, by a majority of the Board as constituted, i.e. three affirmative votes. What is the purpose of ADUs? To increase the range of housing choices, to encourage a more energy-efficient and economical use of the current housing stock, to develop housing units on a single-family residential property, properties that are appropriate for households at a variety of stages in life, to encourage greater diversity of population with particular attention to young adults and senior citizens, to help the town meet its housing needs without detracting from its historic character and existing patterns of development. Thank you, on behalf of the Milton Planning Board.
Thank you, Chair Hall. As I mentioned, the motion before the body is that the town vote to approve the articles as printed in the warrant. Is there any discussion on this article? Yes, sir, you are recognized.
Good evening, Brian Fers, Precinct 10. There's been some question about that, by the way, and it is still Precinct 10. And I hear, I'm rising tonight to support this bylaw, and I'm excited to do it. I will tell you that I'm very excited about another thing, which is that the, this body decided to send something back to the Planning Board for further study, and the Planning Board further studied it. And they brought forward a bylaw that is well thought out, and I am very happy to be up here supporting it tonight. One comment for consideration- One comment for consideration in the future, not for any sort of change or consideration tonight. But the bylaw does limit ADUs to 12-month periods for rental. And I think that's, I think that's a good thing as we emerge into a new era of, of housing in Milton. But I do think it's also important that we think about that as we go forward and we keep an eye on it, because there's lots of good reasons, whether it's traveling nurses or the fact that we have a college in town, we have professors in town, that we may want to monitor that. So, just a call out, I think it's, I think it's very warranted, and I'm happy to support it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fers. Sir, you are recognized.
Good evening, Matt Marong, Precinct 2, Town Meeting Member. I'm here to offer an amendment to this, which I submitted to the moderator. Let me bring it up on the screen. So, what I would like to amend is the aforementioned rental period. I would like to change it from 12 months to one month. I believe that doing so is a win-win for, for the town. It accomplishes the goal as stated in the article of eliminating the possibility of short-term rentals while at the same time acknowledging the realities of how properties are rented. You know, ideally, I understand that a one-year lease is how most people go into a rental agreement. However, I do think, as Brian alluded, there is a flexibility that would be cut out if we pass this as it is currently written. He, he mentioned traveling nurses, also, for instance, visiting professors who would want a 90, nine-month lease term, students from out of town who are working here for the summer, or people on a month-to-month lease who need the flexibility to, to not necessarily commit for a full year, is what I have in mind. So, with that, you know, this doesn't preclude landlords from insisting on a one-year lease if that, that is what they would like to do with their property. So, I think it gives the option to have that flexibility and choice of what you do with your property. So, that is my reason for offering this, thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Marong's proposed amendment, as you can see on the screen, is to replace the words "periods" with "a period" and "12 months" with "one month", so that the entire paragraph reads, "An ADU may not be rented for a period less than one month at a time and is prohibited from being rented on a weekly or daily basis. The ADU shall not be used as a short-term rental or otherwise for boarding and lodging or other commercial use." Is there a second to this motion? Okay, may I hear from the Warrant Committee regarding this proposed amendment?
Tom Caldwell, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6, and Chair of the Warrant Committee. The Warrant Committee supports the article as drafted by the Planning Board and submitted. We do not support the amendment. However, I would like to tell Town Meeting, it was of great matter of discussion over several nights, the 12 versus one. And the, the first speaker who stood to support this article as written by the Planning Board, the Warrant Committee has that exact same sentiment. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Hall, would you wish to speak to the motion to amend? Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith Hall, Chair of the Planning Board, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. So, just to address that, because this was, this was a, we, we really thought about this a tremendous amount and, discussed it with the Warrant Committee as well. We unanimously voted for this for a number of reasons. What, one of the things that we did in this time period is we actually went back to the municipal law unit, the Attorney General's Office, because we wanted to be really clear on this. And thankfully, Peter Mello was able to, to speak to that person who is reading the zone, reading all of the ADU zonings that are coming from towns now, that are being submitted. A couple of interesting points that she had is really, the position of the state is to allow towns the flexibility of lease terms as long as they are consistent with, with what is typical, typically found in the area. So, towns vary region to region. So, if you, for example, if this was a Cape Cod community where you have a lot of summertime rentals, maybe workforce housing that you needed for short-term, that might be really appropriate. You might even want to do less than 30, than 30 days. So, each town is able to, they've given the ability for each town to make this decision. Currently, every lease in Milton, in houses rented in Milton right now, every single one has a 12-month lease requirement except for one, one property, which allows six or greater. The state has also, we did one of the questions that Peter asked, what kind of, what kind of terms are other towns doing? And the state is seeing other communities with ADUs with 12 months. So, this is consistent with what other, other communities are doing. And one of the really, I thought really interesting points, which is a concern of the state and that other communities have expressed, is housing insecurity and how short-term, a short-term lease would not necessarily benefit a tenant who had sought and found a more affordable housing option. It would basically be giving a landlord the opportunity to do a one, a month-to-month rental if they wish. So, if your neighbor were to come and, you know, I had an ADU with, you know, a schoolteacher who I'd rented to and had a, you know, a month-to-month situation, my neighbor might come and say, you know what? I've got somebody who would love your ADU, and they're willing to pay $500 more than you. That's leaving the person who is renting, and, and it gives insecurity to whoever is going to be moving into that, into that ADU with, with a 30-day limit. So, this is why we're starting with a 12 months. We can always address that if we're seeing, you know, that it's, that it's a difficult situation. But I think for the most part, I think this would be, as the ADU is new to our town, allowing, you know, a resident to, to live there, a tenant, to not feel at risk of, of having to move after such a short time. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Hall. As it is their warrant, does the Select Board wish to weigh in at all on this proposed amendment? Yes, thank you. Yes, Chair Wells, you are recognized.
Sorry, Madam Moderator, housekeeping issue with one of my colleagues. The Select Board votes, majority votes to support the Planning Boards, not to support the amendment, but to support the 12 months. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we will entertain discussion on the motion to amend only, and I saw you were first, sir, so you may go ahead and be recognized.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mark Roniger, Precinct 7. The person from Precinct 10 who spoke a couple people ago made a good point. I know he's pretty well-versed on planning issues, certainly more than I am, but he supported what the Planning Board had come up to, would come up with. Ms. Hall, it sounds like they've done a very thoughtful job. The person from Precinct 10 mentioned that maybe down the road, we could reconsider if a shorter time period would be appropriate. But if we're in line with other similar communities, why, why rush from 0 miles an hour to 120 miles an hour? Let's adopt what the Planning Board has put a lot of time into. That's why we have them do their plan. And then if we have a preponderance of professors and visiting nurses breaking down the walls of Milton to get in, we could certainly shorten it. But I think we should go with the Planning Board, and now the Select Board recommends. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am in the blue jacket, you are recognized.
Hi, my name is Debbie Elsieby, I'm in Precinct 3, Town Meeting Member. And I live at 11 Morton Road, which is about a block from the train. And I have an in-law apartment. It's been there since I was, when I bought the house 30 years ago in September. And I just wanted to give some real-life situations of people that have stayed at my house for less than 12 months. So, I had a friend from church that's house burned down, and they needed a place to stay for 30 days until they got a trailer put in their house. I had a friend that was in a domestic violence situation that stayed with me for three months before she could find another place to go. And then, my neighbors up the street on West Side wanted to sell their house, senior citizen neighbors in their 80s, and they really wanted to stay in the neighborhood to, you know, to sell their house and then to find a permanent place. So, they stayed for like four or five months, clearing out their house, selling it, and have now found an apartment. But that was all under 12 months. That's all happened since my husband passed away, and I've, my in-laws moved out to a different location. But those are just real-life situations that are happening that are under 12 months. And we've had no problems with our neighbors, but just think beyond the 12 months, like that. Believe me, it would be easier for me to do something like that, just to always have 12 months. But I have a lot of friends, and I, I kind of have become that person in my church community that if somebody needs a place to stay, they look towards my place. So, I would like for you guys to consider that, and I support the amendment for less than 12 months.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, you over there are recognized, thank you.
Hello, Christine Turnier, Precinct 4. I very much appreciated Chair Hall's deep explanation of how the Planning Board landed at 12 months. And one of the points that I thought was really very impactful was the recognition that every community has a right to create these requirements based on what's best for those particular communities. The example being, for example, Cape Cod, where there may be more seasonal workers, et cetera. And I also appreciate that the individual who recommended the amendment gave a couple of examples where a shorter-term lease may be more appropriate for certain members of our population. Could the Planning Board specifically give examples of why? I understand that other communities have this 12-month period. Can you give specific examples of why you believe that this is the appropriate period, the 12-month period is more appropriate for Milton and the housing populat- and the housing stock in Milton? I would appreciate that very much, thank you.
Thank you, if the Planning Board can address that. Chair Hall, you're recognized, thank you so much.
So, one of the things, I'm sure you all have read this, is that one of the requirements, and I appreciate the other speakers' comments, there is not a requirement that these, that an ADU be owner-occupied by either of the units. So, this is potentially investment property. Somebody could buy, maybe buy Debbie's house, or, you know, or buy a property and have that in-law, have that ADU unit in there. And they can live out of state, they can live out of the country. We thought, you know, just as this is very new to our town, let's, let's see how this works with having absentee landlords, potentially. You could have somebody who, who lives there and rents out the other unit, but there's also the option that both units are owned by an investor who really doesn't, doesn't care if trash barrels are brought in, you know, doesn't worry about mowing a lawn or do, you know, sometimes we just want to make sure that somebody who's there for a longer period of time would be invested in the town, so.
Thank you, Chair Hall. Sir, you are recognized.
Brian Kelly, Precinct 7. I have a concern, some of my neighbors have been complaining about an Airbnb on Antwerp Street. It's a multi-family building that is rented out as one, one unit. And they're getting multiple visitors from out of state, and they're parking up and down the street, blocking the driveways. They're very concerned, at night, there's been a lot of noise sometimes, not all the time, but enough to make them very concerned about it. So, by having a short-term rental, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a problem with Airbnbs, even though we don't say we can have Airbnbs in these units. So, I have one question for the Planning Board, is what is the penalty for having an Airbnb in this town? And the other question, I just, she's, Meredith just mentioned that, you know, this is not your in-law's apartment. And so, another concern I have is, how do we know which unit comes under the ADU law? So, if I buy a property and it has a house and it has an ADU, can I now designate the house as the ADU if it's under 900 square feet?
If we can not make colloquy while Mr. Kelly is speaking, go ahead, Mr. Kelly.
I was just curious if there could be some manipulation on which is the, the ADU and which laws apply to which unit, because they're different in a, in a residential home. So, that's some of my questions. I'm concerned about tourists coming in and one month, you could rent it for the month. I could easily rent it for a month and the people stay there two weeks. And then I can do another monthly rental, starting in two weeks. So, tourists could come to Milton, they could rent the ADU, and then they could spend all their money in Boston, and we're not gonna get the benefit of that. We're just gonna get more congestion and people living in our neighborhood who we don't know. And so, that's just a concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hall, Chair Hall, excuse me, if you can address those two questions.
So, technically, there can only be one ADU per lot. Towns and other towns may allow more. We, again, we are allowing one per lot. So, that would go through the Building Department on review. And then, we would have, you know, a slight site approval to, a very narrow scope of site approval on, on the ADU. But there technically can only be one, one of the units, and it would have to be under 900 square feet and meet all of the, all of the qualifications of an ADU. Bathroom, you know, and everything would have to be approved through the Building Department. That helps. And then, and then I'm gonna have Nick Milano discuss this, because really, it's through the Building Commissioner who would address current Airbnbs if, if folks know about them in town, and we know they do exist in, in Milton, but.
Thank you. And Mr. Milano can answer that question, Mr. Milano?
Sure, Nicholas Milano, Town Administrator. This has been a topic we've discussed recently, as Mr. Kelly pointed out. We are aware of the operation of Airbnb on Antwerp Street. I'll just note that our zoning bylaw is not great on this issue. We have two prohibitions in the bylaws that the Building Department has used to enforce against Airbnb activity. One of them is that no more than three unrelated persons can be in a dwelling at any one time. We have gotten court orders to shut down operation of Airbnbs using that mechanism. Again, it's not perfect for our operation of that. And the other one is that it's not a valid home occupation. So, those are the two mechanisms we use. But if the town, and something we've discussed with the Select Board, is if there is interest in more outright banning them, then we should have and draft some better language around that.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Chinman, I saw that you were waiting to speak, Mr. Chinman?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Michael Chinman, Precinct 2. I know very well that you can't believe everything AI says, but I did a little Google search. And AI says that according to Massachusetts ADU regulations, municipalities cannot impose restrictions on ADUs that are allowed by right that are more restrictive than those placed on single-family homes. I'm not a real estate lawyer, I truly don't know the answer to this, and I don't mean to put Town Council on the spot for a question he may not know off the top of his head. But it sounds like this may not be legal. I support the amendment to reduce the minimum time period, but it sounds like it may not be legal to have any minimum time period, because I'm not aware of any minimum period of rental of single-family homes in Milton. So, I'm wondering if having any time period is legal.
Thank you. Attorney Mello, if you can answer that question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator, Peter Mello, Town Council's office. Yeah, good point. So, there, with respect to certain types of regulations, the ADU regulations do limit and, and preclude, like, for example, with respect to design standards. You can't impose more stringent design standards on ADUs than you do upon single-family residences. There's also language about the extent to which you can regulate dimensional requirements of ADUs relative to. of ADUs relative to other types, you know, single-family or other accessory uses. The original iteration of the regulations did, I think, include a more general prohibition on, that would have restricted your ability to regulate ADUs more, more stringently than you do single-family uses. That was removed. I, as, as Chair Hall mentioned, I spoke with Margaret Hurley, who, who, by the way, is technically, her title, I think, is Senior Counsel on Housing and Municipal Law. She used to be the head of the Municipal Law Unit, and so technically, I just, she's not part of the Municipal Law Unit, I don't think, specifically anymore. But, but she helpfully reviewed this and offered some thoughtful comments. And she did confirm that there, the other municipalities around the state have proposed minimum term requirements in their ADU bylaws, including 12-month terms. She, she couldn't identify off the cuff an example of a municipality. I'm not sure that the Municipal Law Unit, which is the office within the Attorney General's Office that reviews municipal bylaws, has had occasion yet to review an ADU bylaw that imposed a term minimum, a 12-month term minimum or a lesser term. I haven't seen any yet. She couldn't identify any of, during, in the course of that conversation. But it is legal. And basically, and this is one of the comments that Ms. Hurley had, it would be subject to the reasonableness test that's set forth in the regulations. So you can impose reasonable regulations upon ADUs. The, the ADU regulations recognize that. And there's a, the whole series of provisions that kind of put the parameters on what that looks like. It's got to be tied to a legitimate municipal interest, rationally related to that interest. It can't, you know, there are other components of the test that the, that the state would consider in making that determination. So I think with respect to the minimum term and the proposed ADU bylaw, the state, the MLU, the Municipal Law Unit, would, would apply that reasonable test that's delineated in the regulations to that requirement. Is it supported by a legitimate municipal interest? Is it rationally related to that interest? Would it effectively, you know, preclude ADUs in Milton? Would it render them uneconomic and the like? Those are some of the factors that would be considered. But, but that requirement is not per se unlawful. It's just subject to the regulatory test for reasonableness.
Thank you, Attorney Mello. I see two individuals in the front, then Ms. Agostino, and then the individual behind her. You may go ahead and be recognized.
Nora Harrington, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. Many people might know that in Massachusetts, a short-term rental is considered anything less than 30 days. So I just want to sort of dispel this idea that it's likely that ADUs would be used. You know, I don't expect a lot of tourists to be coming to Boston and staying for a month in Milton. I don't think that's kind of the, typically what tourists want to do when they come to Boston. I support the amendment that Mr. Marong put forward. For me, this is kind of a property rights issue. Why are we restricting ADUs to a period that's different than a single-family home? You can rent out your home, say, if you're going to be traveling for a year, and you don't have to rent it for 12 months. So it seems odd to me that we've put some sort of restriction on an ADU. A 900-square-foot apartment, you know, on a lot, you know, maybe you get two bedrooms out of it, that is not going to generate the kind of rent that is going to make it some sort of, like, amazing moneymaker by the time that you create a 900-square-foot unit on your lot. Most ADUs, I think, will probably be used for family, whether it's in-laws, people with disabilities, kids with disabilities, et cetera. Say then you're a family member with a disability, or your in-laws move out, and it's January, and now you have to find a tenant for 12 months in January or February and keep them until, you know, January or February of the next year. Like, it just makes no sense to me that we would have something so restrictive. You know, the law ends, you know, according to Mr. Mello, there's some sort of reasonableness test to have a further restriction, and I just don't see how it's reasonable. You know, I think we should, one month precludes it from being used as an Airbnb. I think we should go with that and give property owners, if they're going to make this investment, to create something that they likely need. Nobody's going to do this for the heck of it. You know, if they're going to make this investment, let's give them a little flexibility for what happens down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrington, and the individual next to her. And then we'll move to Ms. Agostino.
Thank you. Rachel Posar, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. I will just echo a few of the sentiments expressed by the Town Meeting Member from Precinct 2 who just spoke. I do want to point out a couple of details. One is that per the state of Massachusetts, short-term rental is 31 days or less. So if we do move forward with this amendment, I would just propose changing the wording to be 31 days, or, sorry, not 31 days. I'm sorry, a period not less than 31 days. That's what I, I would propose. Just because in Massachusetts, a short-term rental is subject to a specific requirement. It's a short-term rental registration and a short-term rental tax. So that's an entirely different beast, I think, than what we're talking about tonight. One thing I do want to point out, though, I, I do think it's a good idea for the town to have a bylaw specifically addressing short-term rentals. There's a potential benefit for communities that do allow short-term rentals, and that's the community impact fee that can be charged to any owner of more than one short-term rental. So that's something to consider for future zoning. But speaking to this amendment directly, you know, I agree that a minimum term of 12 months is too restrictive for a landlord. It's not something that we impose on people who are renting out single-family homes. It doesn't make sense that we impose that requirement to people renting out an ADU. I think another scenario that we might want to consider is that, for instance, if you have family, perhaps retired parents, who live out of state for parts of the year, when they're home, you let them stay there. When they're not home, maybe you want to rent it out for nine months to a college student. And again, as the previous speaker pointed out, locking somebody in to only ever looking for a new tenant in January unless they're willing to put up with, you know, a nine-month vacancy is not reasonable. And then finally, I just noted that in the warrant, in the comment from the Warrant Committee, one of the rationales provided for requiring this 12-month term is that it would provide school stability. But again, that's not something that we ask of people who are renting out a single-family home. And I think it's much less likely that a family with children who are in the schools will be renting an ADU versus a single-family home. So again, I support this amendment. I would, you know, propose to Mr. Marong that maybe we consider changing the definition of short-term rental to be consistent with what the state considers to be a short-term rental. But otherwise, I'd encourage you to support it.
Thank you. So if you are moving, Ms. Posar, if you are moving to change the language to 31 days, that's effectively a secondary amendment. We can hear from Mr. Marong, but we can change the language to 31 days, and then when we get to it, we'll vote to that.
Friendly amendment, please. I would like to propose a friendly amendment then to.
Mr. Marong?
Yep.
Okay. If we could change that to 31 days?
Not, yeah, not less than 31 days. Sorry, it was really hard to read backwards. Surprise.
And then I see that, Ms. There are, there are two nots. So the, the point was made that there are, there were two nots. Ms. Agostino, I see that you've been waiting patiently. If you'd like to speak to the motion to amend, which now says 31 days.
Moderator Dylan, could we have that language back on the screen? Oh, sorry. I just want to be sure.
She's just changing the language for us, Ms. Posar. Thank you.
Is she all set?
I think so.
Moderator Dylan, I rose specifically about that issue, farthest issue, and because I will make a comment as the amendment, towards the amendment. But looking at the detail of the legal requirement, you know, I want to be sure everyone understood Massachusetts law is, it would, the 30 days would not meet the law, because a short-term rental would be less than the 31 days. So that's been clarified. But when you read discussions on the Massachusetts general law, they usually use the word, and I would ask you to refer this to Town Council, to maybe make it a friendly amendment to clarify the legal language, that it read 31 consecutive days at a time. And therefore, we're meeting the short-term rental for Massachusetts, and we're just spelling out 31 consecutive days. And then I would make a comment after this.
Thank you. If, Mr. Mello, if you can comment, and then we'll see if that friendly amendment, secondary amendment is accepted. Mr. Mello?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Peter Mello, Town Council's office. Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. It's a fine point, but I think the addition of the word consecutive is fine.
Okay, that was accepted. So Ms. Agostino had a comment as well?
Sometimes a period can make a difference in a legal document. So thank you very much, Moderator Dylan. Diane DeTulio Agostino, Precinct 9. I rise because, as a former planning board member mentioned, there's been a lot of work put into this article. And to get such a big consensus, we don't even have a green sheet. That's really amazing for a planning board article. So I commend everyone, the Warrant Committee, the Select Board, the Planning Board, every committee that's, and anyone who's gone to any of these meetings. This is amazing. But I do believe what the prior planning board member said, that he agreed with the 12-month period. And, you know, we can always, it's a small amendment to make in future town meetings. So I would recommend a no vote on the amended, even though I do, at least legally, I do appreciate Town Council's and the proponents' friendly, acceptance of the friendly amendment. But I think the 12 months, not that long ago, a couple of years ago, we had an illegal Airbnb with 17 unrelated, which I don't think is anywhere in this amendment, it couldn't be in the amendment, that, you know, unrelated, 17 unrelated people were living in a mansion, and the town of Milton had to go spend a fortune in court to address it. So I think the 12-month will give the, the building commissioner, who has to enforce it, correct, the opportunity to, with all the construction going on, and the fact that we don't even have a head building commissioner right now, I think the 12-month will ease us into it, and then we could step from there into possibly the 31 consecutive days. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Agostino. I see Mr. Fahy, the gentleman sitting next to him, and then the gentleman over here. Mr. Fahy?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Sean Fahy, Precinct 9, Town Meeting Member and member of the Planning Board. I, I rise to express my opposition to this amendment and to urge the body to consider the value of a 12-month minimum. We're making an extraordinary change to housing in Milton, an extraordinary change. And to use a very simple expression, I think we should walk before we run. We see, and when I say we, I think all of us see great value in the ADU and what it can do for the residents of the town and for those that would like to be occupants of an ADU. But I also feel that we have an obligation to maintain the stability within our town. Most of us enjoy the benefit of knowing our neighbors, and probably all of us enjoy the benefit of knowing our neighbors. We are not a community of hotels and motels. And as a result, we have a very stable environment that we all live in. So the 12-month minimum rental affords our community the opportunity to maintain that stability. And I believe it is most beneficial to the town of Milton to maintain 12 months and avoid the transient nature that would result from a one-month rental period of time. So I ask you all to consider the position of the Warrant Committee, the position of the Select Board, the position of the Planning Board in the article as it's written with a 12-month minimum. And I urge you to oppose this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fahy. And then Mr. Walsh, who I remember. No? Okay. And sir over here, I'm pretending I don't know your name. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Andy D'Amato, Precinct 7. I think going from 12 months to one month is pretty drastic. The gentleman who spoke and introduced this amendment gave some good examples of why it could be shorter with a student or a traveling nurse, but that, those were six and nine-months sort of periods. And going to one month is closer to the Airbnb model. And that's not even considering all the moving in and moving out issues that seem to happen. It's hard for neighbors to understand, is that a new person for a month, or is that a person for a week? The problem here, too, is what we have a lot of in this town, is how do we enforce these amendments? How, who's checking? This is all new, and it's going to be a lot. How many ADUs do you think we're going to have? I don't know. There could be many. And I do think that if you were to have someone leave after nine months, you could fill that spot. January, February, it doesn't matter. Try to find an apartment in this town. I own a few apartments, buildings with apartments. I never, ever have a problem. There's usually 10 to 12 to 15 people, sometimes more applying. There's a low stock of apartments. So if you have an ADU with a lease that is 12 months, and it turns out that someone has to leave after nine, that lease is ended, you can re-rent it. It's, it's just not, that's not an issue. What I do, do think, though, is the, the issue is stability for young families or young people trying to stay close to maybe where they grew up, or older people who are downsizing. They want stability. They want to know that I'm in a place where I can be for 12, 24, 36 months without having to worry about, as someone else mentioned, getting a better offer, you know. And 900 square feet is not the same as a full house, a full-size house. I don't, I don't see that correlation at all. But I was wondering if there were any mechanism for exemptions. So let's say, you know, I don't know. One of these things happen, you know. Nine months later, a nurse leaves or student leaves. Can they come to the, to someone and say, this is our, you know, this is our issue. Can we now rent to somebody else? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Hall, if you can answer that question by Mr. D'Amato regarding with their exemptions, person moves.
We currently don't have any exemptions. That's something we could certainly look at in the future, in offering that. One thing that, if it is a 12-month lease, there's nothing, and I think this was discussed in February, but there's nothing that says that a, a landlord can't sublet, or do a, if they don't fulfill the rental term, that there's a, a sublease situation. So when they were drafting, if they were drafting the lease agreement, they may, it may be a 12-month lease, and they would allow for a sublease for, if there was a shorter term, if somebody had to move out, as many of us have had that situation, that if you can't fulfill the 12-month, that you're allowed to sublease it. And that would be up to the property owner.
Thank you, Chair Hall. Ma'am, I see behind Mr. D'Amato. Ma'am, I see behind Mr. Demato.
Christine Hodlin, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. I just have a couple of points to make. One is that, yeah, this ADU is new to Milton because it was here before us four years ago, but was voted down and referred back to the planning board to make some changes. And I'm glad to see that finally, four years later, since the state is requiring that we do it, that it's here before us for us to look at. Secondly, I would like to say, it might be new to us, but it's not new to other towns. And there's many other towns, and from what I understand, they have a 30-day rental period, and that is Wellesley, Newton, Braintree, Belmont, Lexington, and Hingham. So I'm not sure why we can't-
If we could allow Ms. Hodlin to continue speaking, go ahead, Ms. Hodlin.
I'm sorry?
Just try and encourage people not to interrupt you. Go ahead, Ms. Hodlin.
Okay, thank you. And the other point I want to make is that my husband and I own a two-family, which we're lucky right now to have our two children in, one downstairs and one up with their, with our grandchildren. But we have rented this apartment for many years, but when we first moved to Milton, we lived in that apartment. And I can't tell you how hard it is to try to rent an apartment in the winter. If you're not renting your apartment in the springtime or sometime in the summer, it's very difficult to get a one-year rental to come in. And you don't really want someone that is going to have their term expired during that period, because you're stuck with an apartment or with an ADU if you're using it for income, and you can't rent it. And I guess one other point is that there are many short-term rental opportunities in this area. I have a daughter, and one of the other town meeting members here has a daughter. Good friends of theirs are, they're both nurses, and they own apartments, and they rent them to traveling nurses. We are in a huge, huge hospital area with many, many hospitals, in great need for medical people, and there's a lot of short-term rentals required for those nurses coming from either this country or another country. So I really strongly urge you to support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodlin. Mr. Demato, did you have additional comments? Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to the motion to amend only? Okay, I don't see anyone. So with respect to the motion to amend, and I'm going to read it one more time for everyone, "An ADU may not be rented for a period less than 31 consecutive days at a time and is prohibited from being rented on a weekly or daily basis. The ADU shall not be used as a short-term rental or otherwise for boarding and lodging or other commercial use." If we can put up the slide for the vote, this will be a majority, whether or not to amend. If you vote yes to amend, it would be A, no is B, C either don't press anything, or you can, excuse me, no is either C or, excuse me. Yes is A, B is no, C is abstain, or don't click anything to abstain. Thank you. Okay, the motion to amend passes 145 to 80, so the article, okay, the article will be amended. Now we will vote on the article. Is there any additional discussion on the article? As amended, Mr. Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Brian Walsh, Precinct 8, and I rise in full support of this motion for ADU, and I thank the planning board for putting it forward. I want to share, much like many of you, I got to tell you, I really, really appreciate living in the town of Milton, and I raised my family here. And my three children would all, at least a couple of them would like to also live in the town of Milton. And so one of my daughters was raising two children in another town and couldn't quite afford a single family of her own, even though she and her husband were well-employed. And so without this bylaw in place, I went through the Board of Appeals. My wife and I were in a position to hire a lawyer, spend that money, and we built through the, again, through the Board of Appeals, an ADU on our property. And I'll tell you, I think our situation is something that a lot of others in Milton will take advantage of. So it was my wife and I now able to live on the same property with our daughter and her husband and our currently, it's still counting, currently two grandchildren, and what a terrific, terrific experience. I strongly support this, and I hope you will, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Callahan, did you wish to speak? Mr. Callahan, you're recognized.
I do. Tom Callahan, Precinct 4, Town Meeting Member. So I appreciate the planning board's work on this over a long period of time, and also their revisions to it. I still remain concerned, I guess, about Section E, which is the requirement of site plan review for an ADU. I could be wrong on this, but I think if I tear down my house on 16 Orenow and rebuild a new house, I do not need site plan review. But an ADU, but I will need to go through site plan review for my 900-square-foot ADU in my backyard. So I understand the state allows site plan review, reasonable site plan review, I think is the key word there. And I also understand that this section has gone through some revisions since the February town meeting. So Mr., Madam, whoa, sorry to be the first to do that, Madam Moderator.
Squirt on.
I would, I would request that the planning board maybe speak to what changes were made between February and now, and, yeah, that would be my request.
Thank you. Chair Hall, if you're able to speak to that question?
Yes, and I also see Kathleen O'Donnell, who will also speak, because she was instrumental in us being able to really separate our site plan approval article, which we'll hear next, and to, and separate the site plan approval process than an ADU would go through. So it's a much simpler, it does not, it is only what is contained, which is a very, you know, sort of a general, sort of a review process, but it would, but not the detailed site plan review that you'll hear when we discuss this more of a, in more detail, the site plan approval process. So they were separated, and so I think that was one of the biggest concerns that we heard was, was taking that site plan approval out of the ADU article. And we did do that and worked with Kathleen on this, so.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Callahan?
Tom Callahan, Precinct 4. Additional concern is, it requires a completed application form and a filing fee, and I don't know, I'm particularly concerned about income restraints, homeowners trying to do this, right, for income, you know, to generate additional income for the family. I would hope that the filing fee could not be onerous, could not be prohibitive, where it could be a discouragement, but I don't know if there is a limitation on that type of fee that could be assessed in this instance. I don't know if that's Town Council or planning board, but that would be my second question.
Thank you. Chair Hall?
So that was one of the things that, when Peter Mello was also asking, we've had all of these reviewed multiple times now, and any advice, it could not be more expensive or onerous than an application, and it would be determined by the building department, but it could not be a greater amount than what another review process would go through, through the building department. And also, one of the things that Milton will have to do is we have to, we will, the building department will need to track the number of ADUs and report it back to the state. So part of that filing process is the reporting, the time that it will take the staff to report back to the state the number of ADUs.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
My name is Kathleen O'Donnell, and I got permission to speak to you tonight on just this article, 38, as I am no longer a Town Meeting Member, but I am Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I thought that people would be on the edge of their seats to wonder what would happen, since I stood up in February to say I didn't like the ADU bylaw, and I know you were anxious to see what happened. So at the last town meeting, as I said, I stood up and I made some objections to the form of the ADU article. And because I did that, I thought, well, it went back for the planning board for further study. And since I felt somewhat responsible for that, I felt I was also responsible to help fix it. And fortunately for me, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts published and promulgated a model bylaw for ADUs. Brilliant. So over the weekend, with the help of Planning Board Member Cheryl Taggias, I revised the version that we saw in February and went to the planning board with that, and we had a lovely meeting to discuss the terms. We talked about it, we worked on the provisions. It was a very collaborative effort. And the collaborative effort, the result, is what is in this warrant article tonight. And so I ask for your support on this. I think that it has made, we've made a lot of changes to it in the, in this past couple of months, and I love Brian Fers's comment about the fact that, wow, it went back for a study and actually did get studied. But I do have to give credit to the Commonwealth for coming up for the model. That helped a lot. Some of you with a longer-term memory may remember that when I was on the planning board, I worked for modernization of our temporary apartment bylaw. And so that I have to say, that is with delight, and as what my nuns used to say, morose delectation, that I come back to you tonight to ask for your support for this accessory dwelling unit article. And I also give you a hint that I think that it would be useful for us to consider, these are as-of-right ADUs. They're either 50% of the principal dwelling, or the maximum is 900 square feet. Many of our temporary apartments are not that small, they're much bigger. And we might want to consider in a future town meeting to add provisions to this bylaw to address by special permit ADUs that are larger. That might be a way to save some of the historic accessory buildings that we have on some of our larger properties, and I would ask people to consider that for the future. I also warn you that as the member of the zoning board, that you won't be surprised to have me come back to make comments on zoning bylaws. And so I ask for your support, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. I see Ms. Bradley. Go ahead, Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Erin Bradley, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. I had a couple of questions, specifically about this section. I'm curious if the planning board has to approve any other of site plan, site plans? Like if I was to want to build my house, would I have to go in front of the planning board and have you approve it? Or does, is it just the building, the planning department that would approve it? That's my first question. And second of all, should we put in something that says or designate, in case you guys get a little busy and you can't? I mean, this was brought up when it came up with the lighting bylaw about the select board, you know, having a lot on their plate. I believe that you guys have a lot on your plate these days, and so I'm just wondering if that would be a nice thing to put in there just to cover, so we're not backed up when people come, ADUs. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Ms. Taggias is rising to speak. Ms. Taggias?
Cheryl Taggias, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 9 and a member of the planning board. One of the things that I would like to make the body aware of is the state regulation says that the ADU dimensional standards can't be any more restrictive than the primary residence or accessory structures. So access, that's different than if you're going to do your single-family home, because accessory structures are allowed to be closer to our property lines. And we've had this clarified, so folks who are applying for an ADU can pick and choose from which are most restrictive. So you could have an ADU that's two and a half stories, because that's what allowed, is allowed for a single family, that is not allowed for an accessory. But you could do that, and you can have it be closer to the property line, which is what the accessory dwelling, or accessory structure allows. So having site plan review gives the planning board an opportunity to review impacts that may come from the position of the ADU on a property, and impacts on neighbors if we're looking at small properties, particularly in our zoning districts seen. So that's part of why it's a little different than a single family in terms of, we think that this level of review, at least initially, will help guide the building department. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bradley, are you making a motion to amend the article to include the provision?
No, I'm not making that yet. I just want to know if the planning board has to review anything else? It's yes or no? Does the, does the planning board review anything else like this? Because it's just very confusing to me that the planning board-
Are you, are you talking about review of single-family homes?
No, any other site plan that is made in the town of Milton, do you, does, do people have to go in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
That was my question. And if I may, Madam Chair, I just had another question. I'm wondering, there's no timeline on this, so technically, you don't have to review this in any timeframe. Somebody, there is. Where? Is it in the second thing? Thank you.
We definitely have a- Yep, there. Submission at a meeting held no less than 30 days after receipt of completion.
Thank you, I didn't get to F. Thank you.
Are there any other comments, questions, or discussion regarding this article? I see Mr. Chimmon. Mr. Chimmon, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Michael Chimmon, Precinct 2. I think in the past, ADU has been synonymous with controversial, so there's, there's people who are opposed to ADUs in Milton. And I think it is important to realize, and I hope Town Council can back me up on this, that if we don't pass this, ADUs are the Wild West without all of these zoning restrictions. You're not denying ADUs to Milton by voting no. You're saying, let them have put storage containers with toilets and electricity in their yard as an ADU, because ADUs are legal. So I just hope the body understands that you don't avoid ADUs by voting no, and by supporting this article, you support the planning board's restrictions on ADUs.
Thank you, Mr. Chimmon. Sir in the front, on the right, I see, my right, I see that you're waiting to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Moderator Dylan. Excuse me, Brian O'Halloran, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. I had a question. I have a single-family home, and it's zoned in a single-family district, and I decide to take the first floor and turn it into a livable unit. Is that an ADU, or is that now a two-family, and how do you make the distinction? Question, yeah.
Thank you. Chair Hall? Oh, can you repeat the question, sir?
Oh, yeah, sure. If I decide to modify my single-family home such that I live on the second floor and I convert the first floor into an ADU, I don't know. Is that an ADU? Is that a two-family? So can you help me understand that?
Yes, so there, there's requirements, maybe if we scroll up, it, it has to meet all of the requirements of an ADU. And it would be based on square footage? Oh, sorry, go down, right, sorry. Right there, ADU, okay. So these would be the requirements here? Oops, sorry. Self-contained housing, it would include- Self-contained housing unit include, it would include sleeping, cooking, sanitary facilities. It would maintain a separate entrance. So these would all be sufficient to meet requirements of the Building Code and Fire Code for safe egress and ingress, is not larger than the floor area, in-floor area, than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller, and is subject to additional, and what we've also, the other items we discussed. So those are the, so the building commissioner would, you would have to have those measurements. Whoever's going to put an ADU in would need to have, anything that the building department would require when you go to do a renovation, you would also need to do with an ADU. You can't start just hiring a contractor, bringing in an electrician, bringing in a plumber, and doing this. It still has to go through the building department, and the building department will know the requirements of the size and dimensions. So, and you can just, because if it's a garage, if it's, if it's a garage and there's 900 square feet above, that, the entire building doesn't, the entire structure doesn't count, only that ADU, the garage area, would not count, for example. So that will all go through the, the building commissioner. Oh, oh, yes, we, sorry. Just another provision, just to highlight too. In the regulations, the, where it says, "The gross floor, gross floor area of an ADU shall not be larger than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller, and shall not be less than 300 square, 350 square feet." So it also, it has to be less than 900, but larger than 350. Thank you for putting that.
Thank you. Okay. I see no one else wishing to discuss this article. Therefore, we will open the matter for a vote, as amended, Article Number 38. This is also a majority vote. No, that already happened. We're voting on the article itself. As amended. Yes, sir. Oh. If you can kindly go see Mr. Mallett, and we'll pause for a second. If anybody else is having trouble.
It's not open yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Chair Hall. The screen had to be adjusted. Thank you. It isn't working yet. Thank you. Give us one second. Technical difficulty. Technical difficulty. Okay. We're all set. We're now going to open Article 38. One second. Okay? Everybody, it's motion to amend Article 38. I'm sorry. Keep putting up the slides. Yes. It's Article 38, as amended. Okay, there we go. Yes is A, no is B, abstain, C. Start again. Article, Article 38, as amended, passes 210, yes, 8, no. We are now going to take a brief five, strict five-minute break before we move on to Article 39. Strict five minutes. We will be back at 9:55. We are going to go to Article 39 after that. If everyone can return to their seats. We're now going to turn, once everybody's had a chance to sit down, we're now going to turn to Article 39. The motion on the floor is that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant. Chair Hall has a presentation regarding this as well. Chair Hall.
Great, thank you. So this is the new proposed, new site plan bylaw, which again, we took a lot of the comments and concerns that we heard from members of town meeting, and went back and really tried to address these items, so. Okay, why are we here? Over the past few months, the Planning Board has been actively working on amendments to the site plan bylaw. These changes aim to reflect current development trends, streamline the review process, better address community concerns related to new development. What is site plan approval, and what is the purpose? Site plan approval is a formal review process conducted by the Planning Board to evaluate proposed development plans for a specific property. The process involves the submission of, submission of a site plan for review and approval. The purpose is to ensure that the proposed land use and physical improvements, such as buildings, parking, landscaping, et cetera, comply with the zoning regulations, design standards, and community development goals before development begins. Specific procedures are outlined for the applicant to follow. When is site plan required? A site plan is required for construction, redevelopment, or expansion of multifamily residences, mixed-use or commercial buildings of 800 square feet or more, parking, loading, service, and access driveways associated with multifamily, mixed-use or commercial, or other buildings excluding single-family use. Any change or use that requires a special permit by the Board of, by the Board of Appeals shall be excluded from this site plan approval process. What is required in the application? The application process. A pre-application conference, applicants seeking site plan approval shall obtain a site plan review application form and site plan checklist from the Department of Planning and Community Development. Submission of the application, they would complete a form for site plan approval, they would submit six paper copies to the Planning Board and submit a filing fee. Plans and content, they would provide the plans and plan content, which would include property boundaries and existing conditions, proposed building locations and dimensions, parking and access driveways. The timeline, the Board shall review the application at a public, public meeting held no less than 30 days and no more than 45 days after receipt of a complete application. The decision-making, the Planning Board has 120 days to issue a written decision. If no decision is filed within this period, constructive approval occurs. Decisions may approve the plan, approve the conditions, or deny with written findings. The benefits of the, of the proposed amendments, clearer guidelines for applicants, more efficient review timelines, stronger alignment with master plan and zoning, and zoning updates. Thank you on behalf of the Milton Planning Board. And again, just to remind folks, we had mentioned this in February, but we currently have a site plan review, which is very vague, very vague, and does not really give any clear direction to, to applicants who come in. So this is really, those last few points are really important, that this is to make the process more clear for applicants, so, thank you. And I do, we met before this meeting, and we just, we have one item which the Planning Board would like to, that we have made a change to, and wanted to bring up, if we could, the red-line version. It's only one, one small addition, just to give a little bit more clarity. One item. Okay. Can you make it larger? So this is, if you look in the warrant, the applicability under B, which currently has A, B, C, and D, this would add an E. So this is just, again, just giving additional clarification, that interior, interior renovation work that makes no change in the exterior appearance shall be excluded unless the proposed work increases the required parking or deliveries from what was required for the existing use. So this is, that would be the only way that we would, and we would be able to address the, the parking and delivery, loading zones, et cetera, with that. So that is the only change to this, and yeah, we hope you'll support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can hear from the Chair of the Warrant Committee regarding this change that Chair Hall just mentioned.
Tom Caldwell, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6, and Chair of your Warrant Committee. The Warrant Committee supports the amendment by the Planning Board.
Thank you. In which case, I would ask the Warrant Committee if the motion on the floor would then, they would be agreeable to have it state that the motion is recommended that the town vote to approve the article with the amendment E, as listed here, reading, "Interior renovation works that makes no change in the exterior appearance shall be excluded unless the proposed work increases the required parking or deliveries from what was required for the existing use."
Tom Caldwell, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6, and Chair of your Warrant Committee. After discussion this evening, the Warrant Committee approves the recommended language.
Thank you. And would the Select Board like to speak to this as it is their warrant? Chair Wells.
I keep pulling this out. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Richard Wells, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7, speaking for the last time at the 2025 Annual Town Meeting. The Select Board unanimously approves this. Thank you.
Thank you. Now that the Warrant Committee has changed their recommendation as set forth by the Warrant Committee Chair, Article 39, before the body will now be with this additional language of E that everybody has now had a chance to review and which I have read aloud, I will open this up for discussion on Article 39. If anybody wishes to be heard on this, yes, sir, Mr. Furz.
Good evening, Brian Furz, Precinct 10, still. I hope you're right, by the way. Again, sent back for special, or to be, additional study, just at the last meeting, and here we are, talking about it, and hopefully moving this forward tonight. I wanted to rise to support this for two reasons tonight. One, as a former Planning Board Member, and one as a real estate developer. As a Planning Board Member, I will tell you that the site plan language in our current zoning leaves complete discretion and confusion for Board Members and applicants, and leads to very long hearings and lots of discussion about what is in the purview of the Board and what is not. This will help clarify that in almost every way. It's very specific, and I think that, in many ways, that's very helpful for the Planning Board to be able to make the decisions. I also strongly commend the Board on their reduction in the timeframes for reviewing. Most site plan applications are for, I shouldn't say most, but many site plan applications are for relatively minor modifications, and therefore, a long, long review period can really hurt an applicant while they're trying to get something done. I will say, I think the design guidelines here, almost made it through the alphabet, got to X on the design guidelines, are very detailed, and are something that we may, as a, a body at some point in the future, decide that we need to scale back. I think it's a good starting place, and I think, again, the baby steps as we move towards a better process is a good thing. And I will tell you, as a real estate developer, between the pre-conference and 24, or 25, 24, good descriptions of what they're looking for, there shouldn't be any question about how and what you are going to build in Milton that will be approved. So I rise in support. I hope you will all support this bylaw, and we can hopefully go home. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Furz. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak regarding this article? You can come down. Okay. I see one. No, you're fine. Come on down.
Hi. I'm Zadie Rose, Precinct 2. I just had a question on page 80. It says, "Upon written request, the Board may, at its discretion, waive the submission by the applicant of any of the above required information." I'm wondering, under what circumstance, they would waive the submission of required information, and can you please provide examples?
Thank you. Chair Hall.
Yes. So, review if I'm, if I'm looking at what you, just want to make sure, so it would be like for a traffic study possibly, if they reviewed the board?
There's 17 requirements.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. That's, so on those requirements, so we thought, it's better to put everything in, and we can always waive it, because it will, it would depend on, in some cases, for example, I'm just trying to think of, I'm sorry? A cut-and-fill analysis, yes. And it, because we get so many different sizes and scale of projects, so the, the cut-and-fill would be a, a good example, that we would not need, we would not need an analysis of that if it was just a simple project. One of the projects we recently had is the memory care across from the hospital. That, we, we, there was not a lot waived on that, because we needed different studies done on drainage, on irrigation, on cut-and-fill. We needed a civil engineer's expertise to come in and weigh on that. We don't always need a civil engineer to come in and look at different projects. We have a preschool that's going on, so different, different, depending on the site, really, the site also dictates what is waived or what is required. Does that help?
Thank you, Chair Hall. Any additional comments, discussion on this article? Okay. Seeing none. We're going to move for a vote on Article 39. This is a two-thirds vote. I'd like to remind everybody while we're waiting that on June 16th is the special town meeting. Article 39 passes 212 to 2. That's a two-thirds vote. That concludes the business of the annual 2025 Town Meeting. With that, I'll entertain a motion to dissolve. Wait, 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 wait. I did. I did. So, do I hear a second? Okay. We're dissolved, the motion carries. I will see you all June 16th, here, 7:30 in the high school for our special town meeting. Thank you, everyone, so much. Thank you, everyone, so much.